It's the Green Economy Network Design Session. We are coming back together after a couple of months hiatus over summer. And it is wonderful to see so many familiar faces. Oops, you know what? I'm going to take this down. Hold on, let me stop sharing. That's why I can just talk to you. So, good morning, everyone. Welcome back to those of you who have been joining us for the past many sessions designing Green Economy Network. I hope everyone stayed healthy this summer, you, your colleagues, friends and family, and had fun, maybe a restorative summer. I want to just take a minute to introduce the newest member of the Jobs First team, who has been very active in the Green Economy Network this summer, Megan Marshall, if you want to just say hi.
Hi, everybody. I'm Megan. I'm the new Associate of Work Solutions at Jobs First in Y C. As Carrie mentioned, I got to meet a lot of the working group members over the summer, and I'm excited to be here in my first full network session, and I'm excited for all the good work to come. Nice to meet you all.
Thanks, Megan. And I also want to give a tremendous shout out to all of the folks who spent a lot of time this summer thinking about the Green Economy Network. We had a task force that designed the logic model from the input that came from all of you and the network and the working groups. They dedicated time, brain space, came in person to Jobs First and built out the logic model, and other members of the Strategy Working Group, who are working on membership protocols, principles of operation, writing a three-year implementation plan and budget, which you will hear much more about later, and more, really just coming together to build the infrastructure for the Green Economy Network to operationalize a service structure. And in particular, I would love you to celebrate, you could do it out loud in chat reactions, however you like. Chris Collins, who has spent a lot of time writing the implementation plan, collaborating on a budget with Jennifer Mitchell, Dave Scott on the Jobs First team for synthesizing everything you all put together for the logic model, and Chris Gasparcaro, Tanya Gale, and Brian Licata for turning that into a logic model that you will see later, that is super exciting, and Megan and our team for learning Trello and putting it in Trello, and all of the people on the Strategy Working Group that are doing lots of things. If I didn't name you, we will be sure to do it later in the session. So, thank you all. You'll see the fruits of their labor later today, and I will pass the mic over to my colleague, Dave Scott.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you, Carrie. Again, for those of you just joining, going to reach out to link to today's agenda and chat. As mentioned, we're recording today's session. This is the space that we're going to be using for network development, so everyone's going to be involved. If you have questions, comments, obviously tech troubles, hopefully no more of that any longer with Zoom. And of course, if you have questions after the session, feel free to reach out to me. We have a lot of stuff that we want to cover today, from things that we've been working on over the summer and things that we're going to continue working on into the autumn. So, we're going to talk about updates and opportunities. We're going to learn about E2's work generally, and their Building Decarbonization Report, and the efforts around decarbonization in New York State and New York City's building sector. We're going to discuss the priority goals of the Green Economy Network, how they tie into what the strategy team has been working on over the summer. And we're going to learn the whys of an implementation plan generally, and see the specific work that's been done by the strategy team over the summer. So, those are the key things that we're going to try to achieve. Again, agenda isn't the... Sorry, Rebecca. Just would have a time balancing too many things. We are going to talk about the various updates, both related to specific things that are already happening in New York City, and specific legislation and more that's happening generally in the U.S., and that's relevant to the kind of work that we're trying to achieve. We, as I said, Echinop Bright, who's here, is going to talk about building our decarbonization report, and we're going to have a Q and A for that in case people have any questions and other relevant information about how building decarbonization, Local Law 97, and other is happening in the city. Now, one of the biggest things is talking about the implementation plan and all the parts related to that. Probably heard of talk about logic model and strategies and more, so going to go into that depth, and then hear from our working groups, and of course, cover any additional questions or suggestions or things that people have to add relevant to the group's work. Okay, so, yes, our priority goals, most of you have seen this, but it's probably been a while, and some of you are joining us for the first time. So, our priority goals, just to go through them quickly, because they're really relevant to all the work that the groups are doing. So, in short, it's increasing economic opportunities, understanding needs, aligning partners, developing and improving and expanding trainings, determining what kind of investments into the green economy would help the most and advocating for them, and generally establishing replicable, scalable paths for job seekers, for green careers, for people to, who are in the green economy already, or people who are not in the green economy and maybe never even have heard of the green economy, want to understand, get into it, and figuring out how partners can collaborate for referral pathways to employers. Pass it over to Megan.
Thank you, Dave. Hi again, everybody. So, to get us warmed up and ready for the session, we're going to move into some small group discussion for a few minutes. We're going to set up the small breakout rooms for an interactive learning activity, which will build relationships and set the tone for the session. So, in those small groups, we would love for you guys to get to know each other and chat a little bit, and some of our guiding questions that you can build your conversation around are, what is one book, movie, show, or something that you saw this summer that you would recommend to others? And one thing you're looking forward to as fall programming kicks off for the majority of us. And Carrie, whenever you are ready to send us into those breakout groups, we will jump right in.
Okay, is it working?
Yeah.
Great. Everyone, please join the room that you have been sent to. And it looks like some people are unassigned. I'm going to... It's not cooperating.
I can make it help.
And can we broadcast these into the rooms?
Yeah.
Were you able to do that, Megan?
Oh, sorry, I saw you highlighting it.
Oh, I wasn't sure if you did. I can't tell if you're sending some. I was going to, but I didn't want to duplicate your effort.
Okay, here it goes.
So, I think we could cut that shorter, right? It feels long.
Yeah. When they come back, do you want me to ask for anybody to share?
Yeah, definitely. You've got a good group. Yeah, ask if anyone got any entertainment tips or otherwise. And obviously, something about programming, if they want, whatever's more fun for them. Or more interesting. When I was in annotated agenda, like, I don't know, one something or two in the morning, I saw Chris Collins pop in. I was like, oh. Someone else is up.
I haven't seen this before. Someone is in a room is asking for help. I guess I will join and help.
Yeah.
Oh, it looks like the other person didn't join their group, maybe.
In which room?
Twelve.
So, we can move to room eleven. Was it Prem? Should we say a certain amount of time left? Hi, Jen.
Hi, sorry. It's been like the most hectic morning. My mom tested positive for COVID, and so I've been trying to help her coordinate getting, whatever it is, Paxlovid or whatever. And then I had to like change desks, but I'm back here now. But you're off when you put us in breakout groups. I was like, okay, I'm gonna go help my mom for a minute.
Thank you for being here, Jen.
Oh, no, it's fine. It's like, it's also, it's funny. I was saying to somebody else, like, earlier on a different meeting, my husband went on like his first business trip in two and a half years, like he left for Ireland this morning. And so, like, getting the kid to school, walking the dog, all these things that he usually takes care of. I'm like, oh, my goodness.
It's a lot, right? All those things add up.
Life is like back to normal, like in ways that I just didn't recognize, kind of like, but yeah.
The subway certainly is making it seem that way. Not that it's working well, but that it's crowded.
Yes.
Yep.
All right, at ten seventeen, I will close. Hi, Tony.
Hi, everybody. Nice to see you again.
Nice to see you, too.
How's everybody? How are you?
Or did you just exit a breakout room?
No, I just got here.
Okay, well, they're ending in a minute, so I won't put you in one.
Thank you.
Great to see you.
Yeah, it's nice to be back. I mean, it's...
The Ready Center came up recently. I can't remember where. It'll come back when my brain warms up, yeah.
Yeah, they've, we, they have been, we've been growing and continuing and getting better every, every quarter or something like that, so. If you've heard of, if you've heard of us, then must be true.
No, no. Well, I heard of you, obviously, from you a long time ago, but...
From elsewhere.
Somebody asked me something about, I, I said, I put the Ready Center on a list of things, the green economy in Brooklyn. But I can't remember what for.
I was, I was, someone was just telling about this, there's this great, maybe you know, this great new big investment in the Learn, Learning to Work program in high schools. That's been kicked off, and I was like, oh, we should connect with that.
There's so much happening, yeah. The, there was an announcement yesterday, I think, about apprenticeships, too.
Same, I think the same, I, same.
Yeah. We connect on it.
Monday, yeah.
Good morning there, Jen Jen.
How are you?
Doing great, thanks.
All right, I think everybody is back.
I think we have a few more trickling in still. All right. Looks like everybody's back. I hope that was a nice time to connect with one another, and we would love to hear from a couple of you about what you discussed. Did we get any fun movie, book, or entertainment recommendations, or any interesting updates about programming? We'd love to hear from two or three of you.
I'll go. Christine DiGara-Laporte, Kingsborough Community College. I shared that I saw Funny Girl, but not with Lea Michele, so now I have to go and spend another $250 to go see it again, but it was enjoyable nonetheless.
Thanks, Christine. Nice.
I shared a book I've read by Brene Brown, Atlas of the Heart, where she talks about eighty different, different feelings in the background and understanding where they come from. And the description of hopelessness, I thought was very, very helpful for us, where she says that in order to have hope, you need three things, which is a clear goal or an aim, and then multiple pathways to get to it, and then a strong sense of agency or self-worth, so that you can step up and do it. And I felt like that really explained some of what we face when we see hopelessness in our, you know, in people we are with.
I agree. The goals, pathways, and agency are definitely words of inspiration for all the work that we do moving forward. Thank you for sharing. Anybody else?
My little group was with Brian Licata and Christina Pastrana, and we mostly talked about Energy Economic Development Corporation, which, you know, I appreciated because I'm relatively new to the organization. But as far as, you know, media and content, Brian has been watching children's movies, which I'm with you on that, Brian, but I shared that I recently saw Bodies, 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 which I didn't know was a thriller. Never go to the movies, even though I love it, but that's just the reality of having a small kid. And my spouse turned to me in the middle of it and was like, what did you do to me? Like, I hate thrillers. All I had seen was like one of the, one of like the review captions, and it said hilariously thrilling. We, we, I enjoyed it, but apparently it was not what we should be watching.
That's really funny. Thank you for sharing, Gaspar, and thanks for the tip, because I didn't realize that either. So, good to know. I appreciate that. I want to give space for anybody else who wants to share before I pass it back to Dave. I want to make sure that everybody has a chance to share out their program and recommendations. And if not, Dave, I will pass it to you to keep us pressing along, and thank you again, everybody, for participating and sharing with all of us.
Thank you, Megan. So, we're going to go to the Updates and Opportunities section. I'm going to start with some updates about legislation, because there's been some major legislation, legislation affecting the green economy in New York, passed and proposed. That's good to know. And I'm going to round figures here, because otherwise we just end up with too many details. So, stepping back to the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act of last year, looking at just for New York State, New York City's specific numbers, a little trigger, but twelve billion for roads, two billion for bridges, ten billion for public transportation, that's the big part, and 2.5 billion in EV funding potentially with 175 million guaranteed. So, when the Interstate Bill overall provided about forty-seven billion for climate resiliency and twenty-one billion for environmental projects, so really laying in a corner groundwork, especially in a city where the built environment is as important as it is in New York. For context, while most New York City households don't drive, there are about 4.4 million vehicles hitting eight thousand miles of roads every day. So, anything that makes the more the vehicle is greener, or gets people off the road, or just generally contributing less to air pollution is a big deal. Fast forward to the Inflation Reduction Act passed last month, sort of the bigger elephant in the room. Thirty-seven billion overall for climate and clean energy, sixty-three billion for clean electricity credits, really important for every place, but especially places like New York, thirty-seven billion on individual green energy credits, meaning people can get rebates and financial assistance for things like retrofitting their homes, or say, getting in compliance with Local Law 97. Thirty-seven billion on clean manufacturing, which is a pretty broad, clean manufacturing sounds like, oh, it just has to be a new factory or something. It could also just be taking an existing facility of any kind and making it more, reducing emissions, making it more efficient, anything like that. So, does affect New York more than might otherwise be indicated. And fifteen billion on wind and solar credits with a continuing guarantee for ten years, which is a big change. Current estimates, perhaps an additional ten percentage points of greenhouse gas reduction for the U.S. Compared to twenty-five, two thousand five levels by 2030, but importantly, like an extra ten percentage points over the thirty percentage points reduction already anticipated. Really key for in terms of businesses and their developments, in terms of, say, companies who hired in New York, it guarantees, or it provides $350 billion of additional loans or loan guarantees for energy and automotive projects and businesses. And again, this is a very broad umbrella that it covers. So, does affect New York City, not just places that are doing, have large car assembly plans or things like that. Per the White House, the bill will bring in about thirty-four billion in large-scale clean power generation and storage to New York State through 2030, the storage component being obviously very important. Tax credits will cover thirty percent of the cost of installing low-cost solar power and purchasing clean trucks for commercial fleets, and thirty percent of the cost of community solar projects with additional bonus credits of twenty percent for projects in affordable housing properties, and ten percent for projects in low-income communities. So, again, a lot of extra bits and details that kind of get left out of the main conversation, that have key relevance for New York City businesses, New York City workforce development. One key proposed, but it's the legislation that matters, or that matters and isn't proposed, but changes the key about the definition of pollutants is it makes, it means the Clean Air Act, say that carbon dioxide is a air pollutant. This matters a lot. You might not follow what Supreme Court does, but in this arena, but Supreme Court had this summer said that Congress never said that carbon dioxide is an air pollutant, which limited how the federal government could regulate this. Now, Congress said, yep, we've said it is. So, this affects future regulations, which in turn will affect how development and infrastructure investment happens in New York. One bit that's proposed, this is New York State-specific, is a environmental bond for about 4.2 billion dollars. This is going to be on the ballot in November, found out recently as proposal number one. So, it would do, it would cover many things broadly, about 1.5 billion for retrofitting facilities and green building projects and heat pumps, things like that, one billion-ish for flood risk reduction, and about 650 million for wastewater and sewage-related products. So, a lot of money for things that are really important to coastal areas with low-lying properties like New York City. So, another good reason to encourage people to go out and vote in November, and to actually pay attention to the ballot questions. A lot of people just skip over those entirely. So, altogether, a lot of money coming to New York City for building efficiency, supporting electric vehicles, improving transit, and supporting green energy companies, which in turn means more green economy hires with disproportionate benefits for disadvantaged communities, like the in New York Environmental Bond, thirty-five percent of the benefits are dedicated to disadvantaged communities. If anyone has questions on what a disadvantaged community means, how that's being defined, there is a very specific group working on this, and they have the maps. Happy to talk more about that. But for now, just want to open up the space to anyone who has updates they want to share with the group about what your entity is doing, or other entities you know about, proposals, opportunities, laws passed or proposed, anything that would be good for the group to know about, any programs.
Dave, let me just throw in there, the tax credit, the thirty percent tax credit. A lot of times, what we found in working with affordable housing is a lot of them are nonprofits, and so there was no way to use, utilize those tax credits. And so now, under this new act, there's going to be a way to utilize those as a tax credit refund to nonprofits that are trying to do solar. So, a lot of community development corporations will be able to wrap that thirty, thirty percent. And if it's in a low-income housing track, I think you get another ten percent. So, almost forty percent of the, the cost can be refunded back toward, towards the cost of the, of the project itself, which makes a whole lot more affordable.
Great point, Chris. Thank you.
I'll share, but I don't have all the facts and figures like you, Dave, so I don't, that's hard for me to report anyway like that. But I'm on the Offshore Wind Advisory Council. I think some of that offshore wind, I think I saw Christine from Kingsborough Community College, who may be able to speak more on some of what they're doing, if I'm right about that. But the offshore wind is bringing a lot of development, particularly off of South Brooklyn, and of course, off the whole eastern seaboard, and what that work means, there's project labor agreements, so most of that will go union, or will have those prevailing wages. So, there's a lot of talk about pathways to get people into the apprenticeship programs. And, and then there's a lot of other things that get people ready to be working near and on water. And I feel like a lot of that, because this is a, this is projection for, you know, in a few years, up to twenty-five, fifty, a hundred years forward. Over time, we'll be doing more on the water. How do we get water-friendly, populous, more active, learning how to be on the water with all the jobs that that could mean? So, that is almost something that, in some of the conversations, we stretch down to, you know, the elementary school ages, what summers could look like, people at young ages are comfortable on the water as they go into work, that they have options close and around them in water. And of course, it's a lot of building trades work. It's a lot of construction related work.
True. Thank you, Rebecca. Anyone else have anything to share? Could be, could be big, could be small, could be internal, external, city, state, federal. Or, of course, if anyone has questions about some development proposal program that's happening in someone, from someone else in the network, or some public or private entity in the city.
So, Dave, I don't, I don't know if this is something that you guys would want, but E2 has a webinar coming up on the Inflation Reduction Act. And if, you know, you're interested, I can throw a link in the chat, or, or give it to you guys for, for, for just distributing afterwards.
That'd be great. Please do.
Echinop, what is E2?
Oh, E2 stands for Environmental Entrepreneurs.
Echinop's going to give...
I'm going to get into it a little bit later, but I don't want to get ahead of the line here.
Real, real quick, Dave, I don't have so much of a concrete update, but the Riverside Employment Network... is still communicating a bit with with Plus Pool. If for those who aren't aware of it, it's going to be the first floating pool in New York City, I believe. It's going to be up up built off of, I think, Pier twenty five, right by the Brooklyn and Manhattan Bridges near Corleers Hook Park. And it's, it's, it looked really cool. I should probably invite them to meet with you, Dave, and maybe even present to this group because it's highly related to what Rebecca was just describing with regard to being on the water. Just they've done a lot of research on the disparity discrepancy of, you know, ability to swim and access to aquatic recreation in communities of color and low income communities. It's a national issue, but definitely one in New York. And when, you know, there's, you know, we had heat sinks in communities of color in New York. Access to the water and the ability to swim and all that is going to is is as important as it was before and and probably will become increasingly so. That's a cool project that we're in communication with. And, you know, they're, they're very close to geographically to three of Low East Side Employment Network agencies, who we call partners. And it's likely that we'll be passing off partnership opportunity there to one of the the Low East Side focused organizations.
That's excellent. Thank you, Aspar.
So Dave, I know we're following a lot of stuff in the green economy. We were talking one of the last meetings about specifically the the emerging cannabis sector. So we're looking at in the next nine to twelve months, about a thousand or more direct jobs in that sector coming out in New York City. There's actually going to probably be about triple that in the indirect jobs that are related to the sector. You know, so I know that this is a really big thing that we're trying to figure out where we can step in with the training and what are some of those kinds of jobs? Not all of them require heavy intensive training. You know, so if we're talking about customer service jobs, if we're talking about, you know, bud tenders, graphic designers, like there's different stages to that. But the fact is that we'll be looking at a thousand jobs in a year. And then in New York City, we'll probably be looking at like somewhere between five thousand or more jobs that are needed over the next three years. And no training programs currently exist for those jobs. So I think that's a really vital piece for us to look at as we're rolling out new programs.
Absolutely. And if there's any additional information that you have now or later, that would be good to share with the group. Sure, people won't see that. For many people, this is a totally new arena. So I know many of us are just like hungry for extra information on the the who and the what and the how of all of this.
Yeah, I tell you, James Parrott put together a great small white paper on this. So if you haven't already read this, the New York Economic Revenue Impact of Marijuana and Legalization. He breaks down the state, the city, and, you know, what the revenue is going to look like, the kinds of jobs that are needed. But if anyone wants more information, feel free to just send me a message.
Dave, hi, David Sorkin. First of all, great to see you again. Now with Rich Energy Solution. An observation. As I have been connecting with probably over a hundred non-for-profits in New York area. One of the things that we're realizing is most have no idea about the local laws. Even those with large plants, they are not familiar with them whatsoever. Many have aging plants and don't see the opportunities or the resources that are out there for mechanical upgrades on many, many different levels, including solar. And last but not least, almost every organization that I talk to is playing, paying the JRT tax, the coast revenue tax. And now for profits do not have to pay that tax. And there's opportunities actually claw back those dollars. So there's a lot of limited information out there, misinformation. And this is one area I think the not-for-profit sector really have to has to catch up on. And I've, I've heard that from others also. So I don't think it's only my own observations.
That makes sense, David. And if there's any additional information, yeah, that would be good to share with the group, things people should read about or resources to check out, please feel free to share with the broad group.
Absolutely, we'll do.
Any, any other updates, announcements, highlights, opportunities, people should know about?
Hi, hi, Dave. I'm Teresa representing Dwayne today. So I just want to show, share that well done Clean Energy Academy, we're currently offering a free training program, which is funded by Nicerto. It's in the clean heat systems and is the air source heating program. It starts on October tenth and it's for five weeks. I can also drop some information in the chat. We have like links to our website and the application form. Where interested participants can apply.
Yes, thank you. Please do drop things in the chat. Good for people to learn about these opportunities.
Hi, everybody. I'm Michael Darcy from Ulster County. I'm the Environmental Outreach Manager. And we just started our working sessions, our information gathering sessions for our own Green Economy Network for the five thousand businesses within the county. Very excited about that. And with that, we also launched the Ulster County Green Business Champions Program, which is funded through a bunch of different sources, but it utilizes the National Green Biz Tracker software. And, you know, I'm, what I'm interested in is helping our our facilitators, the contractors who are going to be developing the network on how they can create a, like a hub, like a base camp without the cost of base camp, where the members of the network would be able to gather and we put documents, resources, have a conversation, things like that. And I'd love any feedback that anybody has. I appreciate it.
Excellent. Thank you, Michael. And if there's anything that people can check out or should read about, I'm going to drop a link to Basecamp in the chat, just for people who've never heard of Basecamp and are trying to figure out how this is similar and different. But I think from now, unless there's anything else crucial, we will pass it over to Carrie for the main presentation portion of our meeting.
Thank you. Hold on, just resharing the screen. All right. Thanks, everyone. That was like a really great update session. I was just sitting here thinking like, wow, look at, you know, what everyone's come together to talk about and I really think the city's thinking and outside of the city, Ulster County too has shifted around the green economy and we're really moving in the right direction to align workforce with economic development. But now we're going to switch to Uchenna Bright, who you saw a little bit ago. I'm going to do a quick intro. Uchenna is the Eastern States Advocate at E two, which stands for environmental entrepreneurs. And she works with business leaders, innovators, investors and other business professionals to advocate for policies that foster a healthy thriving economy and lasting environmental progress. Business leaders in E two's network have founded or funded more than twenty five hundred companies, created more than six hundred thousand jobs and managed more than a hundred billion dollars in venture and private equity capital. Annually, E two releases more than a dozen clean energy employment reports, including a National Clean Jobs America Report and over twenty state specific reports detailing the scope and impact of clean energy jobs across the nation. Uchenna's work is focused regionally, managing E two's New England and Northeast chapters and has a primary focus on environmental advocacy in New York and Pennsylvania. And Uchenna is going to tell us about their Building Opportunity New York Report. And Uchenna, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Carrie. And thank you so much, everybody, for for having me today. Very excited to be here. And, you know, I think just the opening of of all of our conversation, it's really exciting time for the clean economy i- in in this country. But I think globally as well as 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 people recognize the the need to make a shift to healthier environmental action, healthier climate and environmental action. So like Carrie said, I'm the Eastern States Advocate. And I wanted to give a little bit of background about E two. And so, you know, we're a national nonpartisan group of business leaders and investors and other professionals who come from every sector of the economy and who advocate for policies that are good for the economy and good for the environment. And our members, we're, we're a member organization and our members could be architects or engineers. They could be restaurateurs or investors or people who work in real estate. But what really, you know, brings them together and that brings them to E two is that they understand that a thriving economy absolutely depends on a healthy environment and that the two have to be, they are intertwined. And that they recognize that this transition to a clean economy is actually one of the greatest economic opportunities of the twenty first century. It's, it's, it's if done right and strategically with planning and justice and equity, we have this opportunity to really massively shift the dynamic towards a sustainable, healthier, more equitable future. So that is where our members sort of coalesce around. And then if you click on the, click on the button a little bit, so why we are, I mean, the advocacy, this is an action word. That is what we do. We provide a platform to advocate and advocacy is part of that, a part of the political process and an extremely important part. So we bring business leaders in district, in state to state houses on the fed, at the federal level, who active, to actively advocate for environmental policy as an economic imperative. Next slide, please. So our members are really our foundation. So the the members who come and advocate, I just, you know, am an, and am, am a eastern, eastern states advocate that that are actual members who are business leaders and who are professionals who who understand the economic imperative, who who know how to run a business and know, you know, that in order to run a business, you have to keep the doors open and the lights on. You need access to opportunity and you need to be able to run with that opportunity. And so, you know, they are, the business, our members are able to really articulate that to legislators and decision makers. I've taken, we've taken our members, I've taken our members to advocate at the federal level from the American Jobs Plan to Build Back Better to the Inflation Reduction Act. We've been there the whole way, just having meetings, talking to legislators, going in district. And and then at the state level, you know, advocating in Pennsylvania for Reggie or in New York, advocating for the implementation of the CLCPA. But our members are really our power and voice. And this slide really is just showing, you know, the ways that we advocate. So I will go into each one of these just a little bit. If you go to the next slide. We have direct advocacy, which, you know, these days is much more virtual. So you see that here where we where we, like I said, take our members into state houses and and to DC. But lately, over the last couple of years, it's been virtual, which has actually been quite inclusive in the way that some people might not be able to travel to DC or some people might not be able to travel to Albany. But then they can, you know, since we have virtual meetings with lawmakers, it does make it more accessible. So that has actually been a really great way. And in addition to this, we have things like action alerts and quick to call or quick to email. And then also this next slide, indirect advocacy, having our members testify or I testify. This is some testimony that we did this legislative session on the building decarbon work. This was for the all electric new buildings legislation that did not get through, but we will be working on it again next year. And then next slide, please. We also do strategic communications, op-eds, LTEs. These are some of the stuff, these are just some of the things that we've worked on, the advanced clean truck rule, worked on this last year to get, to get through the regulatory process. And then, of course, we have a variety of events as well. Lately, more virtual, but even for Climate Week, we'll be doing a bit of a hybrid in-person virtual events around building decarbonization. Next slide, please. And lastly, we have our reports, which is really what we're here to talk about today. So our reports, you know, have our key data. And yeah, you can go ahead to the next slide. And, you know, the Building Opportunities Report is specific to New York building decarbonization work. And, you know, our goal in New York is to eliminate emissions from all, all building types. So your buildings are are the largest source of greenhouse gas emissions in the state. Recently surpassed transportation based on the, 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 I think it was twenty twenty one Department of Environmental Conservation analysis. And there are six point two million, million buildings in New York State. So most of these buildings that are here today will exist in twenty fifty. So we have, you know, there, some of those buildings have deferred maintenance. Some of them have less, less gross issues than that deferred maintenance, but still have, you know, major inefficiencies, like an inefficient building envelope, not good windows, not good insulation, that kind of thing. And so there's tons of work to be done. And all of this work translates into jobs. Next slide, please. So this slide, I just outlined in in this report, I, I, we, I go into, you know, five of the top occupations, but those five are not all of the occupations within the building decarbonization sector, within the building sector. Fifty eight thousand of the one hundred and twenty plus jobs that are in the building decarbonization jobs in New York State are in professional services, which is not captured in this slide. Professional services include things like engineering or architectural services or research and design or software and tech occupations. But that said, there are also, these are also five of the top occupations in building decarbonization in New York State. And you can see many are building trades. And then another way of looking at it is by technology. So Energy Star is really an efficiency standard and energy efficiency or load reduction, high performance building envelopes. These are things that are part of the, the, the better buildings effort. And you also have things like like LED, like lighting controls, more efficient appliances, minimizing embodied carbon in construction materials. Of course, you have air source and ground source heat pumps. And then things like for cooking, that's another. I should mention, you know, some of the top emissions from buildings are going to be your, your heating, your hot water and your cooking. That is where onsite combustion is. And so having induction cooktops are, is, is a big part of decarbonization. But then also things like advanced controls, load flexibility. And the last thing I would say is sort of that, that, that distributed energy resource piece, which is you know, about is very powerful to be able to have like onsite renewable energy generated and, you know, onsite storage, electric vehicle charging, all of these things actually are beneficial to the individual in, in, in quite a substantial way. So when we're thinking about buildings, you know, it's not just where we live, but also where we work. There are campuses and schools, buildings are everywhere, a built environment, restaurants we eat in, the gyms we work out in. And and the components for better, better buildings are generally the same. Policies that we need, like in this report, we go, I go into the, the, some of the policies, policies at the at the last few pages. And, you know, one of the policies that we got passed this legislative session was the Codes and Standards Bill. It was a much longer name than that, but just shorten it up. It's Codes and Standards. And it basically means you have options, you have more efficient options when you go and buy that microwave or when you go and buy that, that, that fridge for, you know, your restaurant. These, these, these products are are at a higher efficiency standard. So you're saving money without even really knowing it. Next slide, please. So in addition to the types of jobs, this report goes into other important aspects like jobs. other important aspects like job quality, how accessible are the jobs and also demographics? So who has these jobs? And here you can see some of the education requirements and the average salaries and, and, and training requirements. And I think what's compelling, and Carrie mentioned this a little earlier, that we, E two does jobs reports, many jobs reports, some are, you know, some state specific jobs report and then an annual national jobs report, Clean Jobs America. And in Clean Jobs America, you'll see that there are, you know, over three million people right now that work in the clean economy in America. And that is, it's more than a lot of, so like for customer service representatives or, or commercial bankers, waiters and waitresses before and after COVID, there are more people that work in clean energy than that work in those occupations. And I guess what's sort of compelling there is that like, there are tons of high tech jobs, jobs that require four-year, four-year degrees or, 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 or more than four-year degrees. But there's also a ton of really good clean energy jobs that do not require you to pay for a four-year degree to get these jobs. And so that is sort of what's outlined here in just these five occupations. Like I said, there's many more occupations than these occupations, but these are the ones that we're detailing in this report. So next slide, please. Another aspect is to job quality is, is, is benefits, employee benefits. New York has fared, shared, fared well nationally. But I think most of that has to do with our leadership, which I do want to talk about a little bit, a little bit later is, you know, New York is a leader in, in, in clean energy action and in climate action and environmental policy. We're number three as far as in the nation, as far as who has the highest number of clean energy jobs. New York ranks three. And our jobs are high quality. So New York generally has a higher unionization rate than, than our neighboring states. We also, and that, you know, unions generally will have stronger worker protections as well. So, so they sort of do go hand in hand, but generally New York clean energy jobs and building decarb jobs are going to have good wages, high-paying wages and employee benefits as well as part of that. So I should note that, you know, for overall wages, New York clean energy jobs, if I'm not mistaken, are about 21% higher than the state median wage. So just showing how good these jobs are. And then of course, health insurance is also an indicator of, of strong job quality. Next slide, please. So before I get into the demographics, I do kind of want to note that the way, the way I get these numbers and the way E two gets these numbers is through methodology that includes the Bureau of Labor Statistics. And they look at assigned gender. But I recognize, and not just for this category, but in categories that we're about to see as well, that categories that we make for people do not represent everyone's identity. So I just want to recognize that and, 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 and and say that these are what we are constrained to right now. So for demographics, this report really shows where we are so that we can understand where we want to be. And here I would say, you know, it's for the, for the gender numbers that I found for building decarbonization. I thought they were actually quite stark, that, that there's a significant shortage of non-males in the, in the building decarbonization workforce. I, I think that, you know, often people will say, oh, well, maybe that's because women don't want to be part of this. And I, I, I don't, I don't subscribe to that. I feel like if you build it, they will come. So, I mean, I, I think that these numbers are pretty low in my just humble opinion. Next slide, please. And then when you get to, you know, age, I feel like this is a little less, less stark, right? Like, so, so like I said, this is just showing where we are so that we can figure out where we need to be. Next slide, please. And then the last sort of demographic category that we looked at was based in ethnicity. Which again, is just a showing a baseline. So what is equitable? How do we enshrine sort of economic justice into our everyday lives? And I think that New York is leading the way in doing that. So next slide, this is the last slide, I think. Then we can open it up to some questions. So I, you know, like I said earlier, New York is really leading the way. And New York has the strongest climate law in the nation, I think, still. The CLCPA was passed in 2019. And I think Dave mentioned this, that the law requires that at least 35% of the benefits of any climate action go to historically disadvantaged communities. This is enshrining equity in law. And so this is critical and important because policy is what sort of sets you up to do the right things. And I'm not sure of any climate law before this that enshrined equity in the way that we do. And then it also calls for the formation of the Climate Action Council as well as the Climate Justice Working Group, which Dave also mentioned, which looks into where are the disadvantaged communities and what specific needs are the, what, what do those specific communities need? So there could be things like energy efficiency is the biggest need or building deficiencies like mold or pests or, you know, things that impact your health or that impact your ability to institute efficiency measures. But then there's also things like a lack of access to mobility options. So, you know, the Climate Justice Working Group is focused in a dedicated team focused on, on, on answering those questions and, and helping us to define and to find where people need, have the most need and are not reaping the benefits that, and should, and who, and should be first and are not reaping the benefits and should be first in line to those benefits. Because they're disproportionately impacted by, by the harms. It also, so the CLCPA also establishes the Just Transition Working Group, which just released a job projection report as part of the scoping plan that was finished. It's hard to keep track of time these days, but I feel like it was very recently. Maybe it was June that we were all putting comments in for that. But the scoping plan, the draft scoping plan is out. We, you know, Just Transition Working Group did their job projections and, you know, it shows that buildings are projected to, they could add 140,000 jobs, additional jobs by 2030. And that's, you know, right now there's 120. So these are 140 additional jobs. So there is a massive amount of work that needs to be done. And like we said, this translates into jobs. This is a massive shift of wealth and resources. And of course, we need to recognize that as we move away from a resource, so as we move away from carbon intense resources and make the shift to renewable resources, there will be people who need a just transition as well. And I think that that's another piece that the Just Transition Working Group is working, is, is looking at and making sure we are having a planned and orderly transition. This is not happening overnight. But we have time to make sure that we can enhance skills of existing contractors and professionals, but also provide a pipeline for, of good jobs and economic opportunity for people who are entering the workforce. So the CLCPA sort of lays down the law and enables us to fight the climate crisis. But it must be implemented and that goes for any law, of course. So this is a major push for legislation and the regulatory efforts that will sort of facilitate this transition away from gas in buildings in New York State. But it's also creating a huge economic opportunity and jobs that are right here in New York and very localized. So I'm proud to be a part of this work and I'm proud that New York is leading the way in this work. And, and, and I think that leading the way will hopefully also translate into, into some of these federal dollars that are, that are coming our way as well. So I'm happy to, to answer any questions and thank you so much for, for having me today.
Yuchenna, thank you so much. You should be proud. And we're really, we're really happy to have you today to talk about this. And I, I want people in the Green Economy Network to also know that before drafting this paper, Yuchenna reached out, having heard about the Green Economy Network. And so all of the information that you all have been sharing over the year was woven into, to the paper after some conversations we had with Yuchenna. So I want to open the floor, I'm sure folks have questions for you. And I'm, I'm certainly sure that someone on my team does. But let's open the floor to the Green Economy Network folks first. Let me stop sharing my screen so I can see. And feel free, I can't see right now if hands are raised, but feel free to come off mute and ask questions or put questions in chat. I know folks.
Questions or people are doing work on exactly these topics and want to talk about the work that they're doing.
Well, I'll jump in. I, I found this really, really helpful. For a long time I've been talking about creating a baseline so we can measure our success going forward with all this new money coming in. And this, this is a terrific analysis of the baseline of where we are and where we need to go. So it's really, really helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. And I put my email in the chat. So if people have questions afterwards and you take a look at the report or you want to talk further, I mean, we're going to be doing another New York report coming up next year. So I'm like, when, what is today? Today is September and I won't get something done until next year. But really to think about the skills. So, you know, I think that there is a transfer of, we are moving from one thing to another. And and it would be great to wrap my head around and help us wrap our heads around what are the skills that are transferable? What are the skills that are going away? What are the, how can we make sure that everybody has what they need to participate in this awesome opportunity?
Agreed, Yuchenna. And seeing the numbers laid out like that, we have been talking about it for a long time. And can you, can you remind me, this came out in April, the report? And the data, when, when was the data collection time period? When would you say, you know, this is like really relevant for? And if you have any sense, like what changes are you expecting from then to now?
Yeah, so we've had a bit of a challenge with the clean energy data coming out of the user report. So we get our data from the user report, the, the US Energy and Employment Report that comes out of sort of the DOE and, and the federal, at the federal level. And this was like 2020 jobs. So I imagine, and we have our new Clean Jobs America report and the jobs have already grown. And our Clean Jobs America report is not just looking at buildings, it's looking at the whole clean economy. So renewable energy or battery storage, all those things are involved. And it's already grown. So I only expect it to continue to grow. And especially with this infusion and investment from the federal government, which is so huge and so important.
Yeah, I, I think you, you're kind of saying, stating kindly the challenge that a lot of us have in identifying data in the green economy because it's evolving, right? And there are often employers that get placed in there and, and we find folks in this group and other groups say, you know, why is this employer in the green economy? But they do have some green policy, green, you know, it, whatever it is that, that meets them fall into that category that DOL and other like real-time labor market information captures them. Yeah.
It gets a little bit.
And say this being consistent going forward. So that you use the data that you've got and you continue to have that consistency as you look at that data in the future. And, and recognizing there's changes, but you still, you still start with your baseline.
Yeah, yeah. And part of me also wants to think about like how we make those changes. Like I, I mean, I can't, I don't know how much we can inform what the DOE does. But, you know, making recommendations of how they could do better as well.
I was struck by a comparison years ago when we started talking about green jobs that in the 1980s, we were talking about computer jobs. And we thought there were certain jobs that needed that technology of how to use a computer. And we really like miss, we underestimated fully that this was not like a sector, this integrates every sector. And the green job is like that too, really, when we talk about, we need to think differently about sustainability. You know, if someone is buying products for a hospital, it may not be considered a green job, but the things they consider are greening or they're more sustainable. So part of it is, is how we change everything. And DOL is going to certainly claim certain jobs are energy-related jobs. I want to ask a question because if, if E two relates to the American Sustainable Business Network, which I worked with for years and some of us know people from there because some of the founders were really involved in energy efficiency and green work and sustainability. And the sustainable network really looks at businesses from what they do, but also how they do it. So the, the practices of the businesses. Do you all relate to that network at all? Is that like a national thing?
Yeah, I think, so we are national and we do have a federal advocate. And I do think that we have worked with the American Sustainable Business Network in the past. I'm not sure how though, usually probably with like partnering on events is, is one of the ways that we, we, we work with others and then also partnering on our reports and our, our data analysis. And then of course, when we go to do our direct advocacy, a lot of times it, you know, just casting a wider net for different types of business leaders outside of our own network is really important so that we can get the most representation that we can.
I'm going to ask a follower if that's okay.
Yeah.
The, when you refer to entrepreneurs in energy, what qualifies a business as entrepreneur rather than a business? Or is it another word for the same thing? And my, I advocate strongly for worker ownership and worker control and democratic workspaces as I think a way we do business that makes it, that, you know, in a Venn diagram, it overlaps hard with entrepreneurialism, but also not always because it's not as hierarchical, it's much more about sharing the wealth. What qualifies entrepreneurs in your E two?
Yeah, I would say there has, there is a lot of overlap. Entrepreneurs and a business, a business, a business owner, I guess. I mean, I think that entrepreneurial to me would mean forward-thinking innovator, somebody who, you know, is in some ways ahead of the curve. At the same time, we work not just with business owners, even though that's a lot of our network as well, but other professionals. So, you know, engineers, architects, which also can be business owners. You know, so it does have a little bit of an overlap. But then I would say that entrepreneurial spirit just sort of always is sort of in my brain as a forward thinker who, who, who can see, who has vision, I guess. I, I, I mean, that's how, that's how I sort of think about it when I think about the word entrepreneur.
Thanks.
I had a quick question there, Yuchenna. First of all, that's a fantastic presentation. My question I had was about certifications for each one of these particular professions. I know you mentioned that, you know, many of them either like apprenticeships or don't require any college degrees. But is there a particular, maybe the top three certifications that are required? But is there a particular, maybe the top three certifications that are required to get these type of jobs? That you, you notice in your reporting that is very popular? For instance, like an EPA 608 or maybe one of the other type of certifications? What is the, the number one trending certification, I should say, probably?
Oh, I should, I will have to get back to you on that one. That's so, I mean, I think that one of the things that I've found in the research that I've done is so the sort of there, I, I'm not, I will have to get back to you on the certifications, but one of the things I've found in the research that I've done is that there's always this difficulty hiring that people find. There's apprenticeships, there's certifications and there's difficulty hiring. And so one of the things that I've also seen as potentially helpful for us to improve on and do better is this connectivity between companies and apprenticeship programs. So that people who are in workforce development and training programs are getting the hands-on training that they need to go directly into jobs once they're done with that certification. So I feel like that's the one thing that I've certainly seen is that need for more overlap to, 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 to address that difficulty hiring that we've, that we've found. But I will get back to you on some of the certifications and there might be others on this, on this call who work in workforce development training. I think Dwayne was on a little bit earlier, Dwayne Norris, who I love, Soulful Synergy, and I know that they do workforce development training, might also have some, some, some thoughts there. I don't know, play a storm.
Thank you.
Hi. So at Kamba, we do offer Edgeback Training, which is started in March and HBCNR. It's a like, after the training, they all, they get, I mean, they prepare, we prepare them to get EPA 608, a universal Edgeback license. And it's the first time that we started in March. And surprisingly, there are lots of employers who are looking for people who has universal Edgeback license. So it was very quick for, for most of them, like around 50% of the applicants that we have, participants we had. So they got a job right away as an apprenticeship and he was like, you know, above minimum pay like $18. So I think this, this training is really, really good. And once they have a license, there's lots of opportunity and the employers are looking for people with the license. As, as Sean said, like the, you know, EPA 608, universal license.
Thank you. If there are any more questions, why don't you go ahead and put them in chat? Euchana, can you stick around and keep an eye and see if people have questions there?
Yes, absolutely.
Wonderful. Euchana, thank you. My applause to you. And I know this group has appreciated the information you've shared with them. We'll make sure the slides are in the public folder if they are not already. And you will have this information at your fingertips. I'm going to just share my screen again as we transition here. I'm going to pass it over to my colleague, Megan.
Thank you, Carrie, and thank you, Euchana. That was a really amazing presentation and I'm so excited to see what comes next. But switching gears a little bit, I want to also quickly introduce Gaspar Caro. He's the Partnership Director at the Lower East Side Employment Network and he's going to be co-presenting the logic model with me very briefly. But to begin our discussion around an implementation plan for the Green Economy Network, Gaspar and I are going to give a brief update on what the working groups accomplished over the summer to build this logic model. And again, big special thanks to Chris Collins, Brian McCauley, Tanya Gill and Gaspar for their efforts. So to start, we'd like to briefly look back at the work of the network that got us to where we are today, right? You might recognize this green and white picture here on the slide. So to look back, in March, you all participated in a Jamboard session to think of how a logic model can help us achieve our vision for the network. The group brainstormed together by starting with the end in mind, reflecting on the questions you see there on, in green and white on the screen. Then the working groups completed a logic model activity that Dave synthesized and presented during our May network session. And then moving towards June, we revisited those responses during an in-person meeting at Solar One. And both individually and in groups, attendees added their thoughts on what to add or change to this document. And then over the summer, volunteers took the outcomes of that in-person session to begin developing and streamlining everyone's input into an actionable logic model. And so to talk more about that, I want to pass it to Gaspar to walk us through what the group of volunteers accomplished. And I am going to share my screen if I can swap out with you, Carrie.
Thanks so much, Megan. As she said, I'm the Partnership Director for Lower East Side Employment Network. I'm in a shared office, so there's going to be a good amount of chatter. Hope you all can still bear with me. Yeah, so first things first, as, as you'll see here on Megan's screen, this is a platform called Trello. And this is going to sound like a product pitch, but it really isn't. It's a, a pretty straightforward concept, what they built. And I think are, are earlier in the game to building something like this is what's called a Kanban board. K A N B A N. And this is a tool that Toyota Motors developed in the 20th century. I believe in the middle to late 20th century to have a path for how they plan and monitor and execute the, the manufacturer and assembly of their vehicles. So it's, it's really kind of like a way, you know, to think, it's, it's basically, another way to put it is a roadmap, which is also what a logic model is, or a project management process workflow, whatever you want to call it. And more and more platforms are starting to build this kind of a tool into their products. So everything from Asana to Monday.com, all the new little tools that you're seeing for project and team management are starting to deploy this kind of thing. So we had been doing these on the large pieces of paper. Sorry, I'm trying to word blank. With the little, yeah, with, with a little post-it notes and it was just getting so messy and, and you know, crossing it out, really difficult to do. We needed a way to do this remotely, digitally and in a more editable, you know, user-friendly format. So we put it all into this Trello board and you'll see on the left-hand side, an overview for what these little, what these cards are labeled with colors, what those things mean. And that's to kind of be able to filter out everything, all of the, all of the components of this logic model to view it by a specific area of the work or facet of the Green Economy Network. So once people are into this tool, you, you'll be able to filter for yourself and for your view what a specific strat, you know, what are all the activities or the resources, et cetera, related to a specific strategy? So that's the card color glossary. And what those really convey is, is what we were calling categories or tracks. So you know, like, are these like program components, are these outcomes, et cetera? And you'll see from left to right how those move through. What else can we show you guys here? And referencing a separate set of notes on another computer, my apologies. So I guess there's real quick, you know, high, it goes from high level on the left to more focused and specific toward the middle on the right. Target population is a reminder to you all, who the Green Economy Network wants to help empower, let's call it. And influence or resource. So you know, these are the stakeholders that will be engaging and benefiting from the Green Economy Network. Businesses, people who are pursuing employment, either new or better employment. The organizations that support that work. And then practitioners, you know, it, it's a little bit more open-ended, but those could really be stakeholders that don't necessarily fall into those categories. But that are operating within the Green Economy Network. So moving along, inputs are, you know, what this Green Economy Network is going to require in order to, to build it and operate it. And in order, those, those, another way to put it is just resources. You know, what will it take? Who will it take? Is it funding? Is it knowledge? Is it policy, legislation? You know, is it staff? You know, specific, you know, government agency operations, et cetera. And then those are going to feed activities, which is literally like what the operators within this Green Economy Network would be and will be doing. Those activities will achieve outcomes or outputs. Those are kind of like the most immediate sort of tangible result of those activities. They may not be something that we're reporting on, but it, it could be intangible, et cetera. And then short-term outcomes, you know, that's pretty straightforward, easy, easy thing to think about. These are highly measurable and specific, you know, things that you can really grasp and, and share, deploy, et cetera. And then intermediate outcomes, you know, also pretty straightforward, but this is maybe a more vague timeline. For, you know, what will happen from, from the activities, what will stem from the activities? And then long-term outcomes are again, kind of like pulling back in scope and another big picture view of what this Green Economy Network would achieve. So beyond that are, you know,
Gaspar, can I add something really quick?
Of course.
Sorry. I just want to point out with these outcomes here, the different colors, I'm toggling between the category colors and colors. These tracks show how from short-term outcomes and the employers and partnerships, we have these different categories that you see up top in, in green. So short-term, those directly impact over to intermediate, over to long-term. So there's kind of these through lines that you get in the, in what we're measuring and tracking within those outcomes. So short-term builds to intermediate builds to long-term and those colors help us kind of categorize that tracking. Or that's the, the goal. Okay, back to you, Gaspar. Thanks for letting me interrupt.
No, I appreciate that clarification, Megan. Yeah, so you know, I, I think that what's important with these short-term, intermediate and long-term is, is to just think of it as those are the, the results that the network wants to achieve tangibly. And then beyond that, on the right are, are kind of like the, the bigger, you know, kind of social, so, society, socio-economic wide results or, or positive impacts that ideally this Green Economy Network would make. Anticipated impact, another way to think of that is, you know, really, how do we want to change or influence the workforce development and industry in New York City, but also the economy, you know, greening it and making it more equitable just from all kinds of different levels that we've been talking about for, you know, more than a year now. And then ancillary impact is, is, you know, further downstream. You know, things that this, that are really attached to the mission of the Green Economy Network, but that aren't, you know, necessarily like a focused, you know, focused on the activities or short-term outcomes. These are kind of further, hopefully like kind of a flywheel effect where we're influencing and contributing to these, these big picture improvements to our society and economy. And then parking lot is concepts, issues, concerns that were coming up over the course of developing this logic model that we recognize as, as very important and necessary, but that might be beyond our scope at this stage or that might be better suited, you know, as a spin-off or something like that. But also kind of miscellaneous components of, of the Green Economy Network. So the education track, just real quick mention. We have been, I think, talking about and thinking about the work of this Green Economy Network very much from an 18 and up age population. But we know that, you know, minors, students, et cetera, are going to be really fundamental to being able to, to drive and expand this work. So K-12 is going to be a huge and necessary aspect of it, but also 12 plus, what we call it 13 to, to 16. So that's where, you know, it's, it's going to be way more, biting off way more than we can really chew at this point, but we definitely need to be addressed at some point. All right. So Megan, I think that, you know, our next step really is, is, is to try and hone and finish this. And we want to put this into a more digestible format for everyone. That really is a manual. It's, it's a lot, it's heavy. It's probably a good like reference for everyone going forward. But we want a condensed simplified version as kind of like a cheat sheet for, for everyone to be able to look at as well. So Megan, all you, thank you.
Thank you so much. Please bear with me for just a moment. I am having a bit of a technical issue.
And you know what? While we bear with you, Megan, I just want to say, this, this was a lot, a lot of Megan's work. All I really did was recommend the platform and, and show her the ropes with it, because I do use it a lot for project and program management. So Megan, big, big, great work. And who's that to you on this?
Thank you. I appreciate those kind words, but that's, it's all you guys, you know, I just was happy to be a, be a part of it. So thank you again. If you have questions about that logic model and what it looks like in Trello, please feel free to, to reach out and ask us more questions. But as Gaspar was mentioning, the hope is to design this into a one-pager. So that's kind of what you see here, but we hope to, you know, work together to have them, maybe a more dynamic one-page model that we can use that synthesizes the work you saw in Trello. Developing a roadmap for achieving the partnership's vision is, is important for many reasons, including providing a work plan and language to convey what the network is, what impact we will have and how we're going to do it. So this logic model work you see has been the roadmap for the strategy group this summer in building the implementation plan. So that's a little background and reference about that. So I'm going to pass it now to Chris Collins, CEO at Collins Advisory Services, to further discuss the progress of the network's three-year implementation plan that was stemming off of this logic model. Chris, it is all you.
Thanks. I think Kathleen was also going to join in presenting as well. So hopefully she's here and can join in on this.
I don't think she could come. I think she had a last minute.
Okay, okay. All right. So, so when we took the logic model, we started looking at it. We, we started to think about, okay, how are we going to get all this work done? Who's going to do it? What's the, what's the mechanism for doing it? How do we get funding for it? How do we implement all the various tasks that were, the tasks and activities that lead to the various outputs and, and impacts and outcomes? And so we started to take a shot at just developing strategies for implementation. And we, we came up with about eight of them and it's definitely a work in progress. This is not, this is not something that is finalized by any means. And it's really just sort of putting some meat on the bones a little bit there. So I don't know, Megan, do you have, do you have the strategies you can put up on the screen or is it just going to go to the chat?
I can also, oh yeah, Carrie, would you mind? I'm having some tech problems.
I just have to find it. Hold on.
I just dropped it in the chat too.
Oh yeah. I mean, when I hit screen share, you get a bunch of choices because I find it there. Is that it?
Yep, that's it. Great. So, so these are the strategies that were kind of on the left-hand side of what Gaspar just walked everybody through. And the first one obviously is about governance and structure. What is this group, how is this group going to opt, how going to act over the course of the next three to five years? And so we, there is a, within the strategy group, there is a, a governance team that's working on some of this, this stuff on strategy one. And so, we, there is a, within the Strategy Group, there is a governance team that's working on some of this stuff on Strategy One. And some of the bullet points there in the slide give you an idea of the kinds of questions that they're trying to grapple with. And that's everything from, does the network take on an entity role? Does JobFirst take on an entity role that acts as a fiscal sponsor for the network? Are there different, all sorts of different kinds of structures? And I don't think anybody's come up with one yet that we've settled on, but that's a strategy that we have to hone in on in the next month or so. The second strategy that we sort of looked at was to define, establish a database of green jobs in a particular sector. And the report that we just got from E2 was kind of exactly kind of what we're looking for there. Because it gives us a good sense of baseline, but also starting to look forward based on the Inflation Reduction Act and other funding that's coming through. Many of you may recall my presentation from a couple of years ago, where I said, follow money, all the money is there. And we just need to find out where it's going and who's going to be administering it and really start to drill down on the kinds of jobs that are going to be out there in the future. And then, we also, in Strategy Two, started thinking about maybe the way to start with this kind of thing, particularly as you go out and look for funding, is to do a pilot program. Pick an industry, pick a particular area, and set yourself some goals and conduct a pilot. Again, using existing network members to help undertake that pilot, both in terms of recruitment, wraparound services, trainees, training itself, career development, career pathways, and making sure we're defining good-paying jobs. And then, once you've done a program or a pilot, then you can roll it out into additional sectors. And in Strategy Four, we're sort of looking at developing career paths for each industry in the green sector. And then going on to Strategy Five, which would develop an online database or tool for conducting interviews and providing a one-stop shop for jobs in the industry, for people who've been trained to be able to be trained for those jobs and those skill sets that the industry would inform. And then, and then we get into things like upskilling programs, coaching, mentoring kind of programs, things like that. Developing internships and apprenticeships and looking for ways to provide incentives and value propositions for employers so that they'll take people coming out of our training programs. And then separately, as Gaspard mentioned, we have Strategy Eight, which is a developer program track for GED high school and community college students. And that's one that we absolutely want to do, but we just haven't had the time and the bandwidth yet to get the right people in the room to help start to develop that program and that track. So those are the strategies, and those are the kinds of things that we're going to be trying to put some meat on the bones going forward. Coming up with some metrics, both for pilot, but also for where do we want to be in three to five years? So, you know, how many people do we want to have trained? How many people do we want to have employed? You know, and that can be anything from a few hundred to tens of thousands, depending on what we think our goal ought to be, what the market will bear out there, and where the money is going to be to take us there. So, that's sort of where we are, and we're going to be putting much more meat on this as we go forward in a lot more detail. And of course, if anybody has any suggestions, thoughts, solutions, by all means, please send them our way. Because we want to make sure if there's more strategies that we should be including, then we want to make sure we do that as well.
Thank you so much, Chris. I know some of you probably have questions, suggestions, all those good things, but I do want to look at the time and give our working groups the opportunity to share updates. So there's going to be a feedback form at the end of the meeting that will have space for you guys to submit your questions, thoughts, suggestions, et cetera, about the presentations you just saw, and we'll be sure to follow up and share answers and all that moving forward. Does that sound okay with everybody? Great. I see some nods and smiles. Thank you. So with that, I will then pass it back to Carrie.
Okay, thank you. Am I muted? No. Okay, I can't see because I'm sharing my screen, so forgive me. Thanks, Megan. Thank you, Chris, Gaspard. As you can see, it has been a busy summer for the Green Economy Network. And the folks were presenting on behalf of all of the people who have contributed. So, thank you to the full Strategy Group and the task, the logic model task force folks that we thanked in the beginning of the meeting. And we will continue to, I'm sure, as this gets built out. I just wanted to do a quick update on the Training and Wraparound Support Services Working Group. Diane is actually teaching a class today and couldn't join us, so I am representing her. I think the bulk of what the two meetings that the working group had over the summer was focused on was the CUMU. The Green Economy Network Systems Map in CUMU that we've been working on with you all, and Brian Licata has built out for us. And so, we got some feedback. The Training and Wraparound Support Work Group kind of acted as our testers. And they were keeping in mind who we're designing it for, what they'll need to have in it for it to be useful, and looking at overall usability, coming up with recommended revisions that are easily implementable and most important to implement, and trying to create a realistic timeline to do it. So our goals for the end of September are what you see on the screen here. I'm not going to read through it, so we have time for other working groups to update. But you can see, there's a thoughtful list, and there's also a sort of asset survey. It's been a while since you all filled in the one for membership for the Green Economy Network. It's probably could be 12 to 18 months, and we want to get an updated version of what you're training in, who you're training, what kind of certifications, things like that, that will go into the CUMU map. Some of you filled that in a few months ago. Thank you. We will circulate it again to make sure the systems map is really built out. And then you see, there's some longer-term goals. We could create sub-maps, different elements, relationships, things for businesses. Lots of good plans, and Brian has been thoughtful about how to do this. I don't know if there's anything you want to add, Brian, before we pass to the next working group.
I think like anything, we're just always looking for new entities to add to this map. So if anyone comes across a business that's involved in the green economy, an educational facility, higher ed, high school level, a training program, you know, workforce provider, a city agency that's involved, or just something that you're not sure of, but you think that it might be something that we should add to the map, feel free to send David or Carrie an email, and we can figure out how it works into the map, because we just want to keep adding to it to make it much more useful.
Great. Thank you, Brian. And you know how to find any of us, I think, but if you want to, Dave, if you want to put your email in chat so that folks that have questions about the CUMU, the systems map, or want to get involved can reach out to us. And I will pass to Dave and Sean for the Employer Partnership and Economic Opportunities Work Group.
Thanks, Carrie. One last point to add about the CUMU, because just realized that some people may have seen this for the very first time ever today. If you're seeing this for the first time and you're like, what is this? I want to understand more about this. Also, feel free to reach out about that, just to get a sense of how CUMU is and CUMU works. So regarding employer partnerships and economic opportunities, I'm filling in for Stephanie today. So, the group has been working on a few different things simultaneously. One of the key things is trying to define what green jobs are and good jobs are, and think about the approaches for creating partnerships with employers, developing current partnerships, making it easier for employers to find workers with skills, green skills, and vice versa. Another key thing that the group has been working on is a jobs board, but a very fancy jobs board, to make it really easy to find what green jobs are available. Now, as many of you have probably already seen, if you're trying to look for definitions of green jobs or just see what are the green jobs that are available, any of that, it's not nearly as easy as other categories. So, we're talking about the jobs board itself. I'm going to pass over to Sean, who has been working very hard on putting this together and can tell you all about it.
Sure, absolutely. First of all, always good to see everyone. Thank you, David. So, basically, in our group, you know, I basically took the task, you know, I have a significant software engineering background and decided to go ahead and tackle this on some off-peak time. And so, I'll put the link in the chat. It's very, very alpha. In fact, it's more of a proof of concept, if anything, but I'll put this in here. Okay, and so this is the kind of like an alpha, I put the link in the chat, is a very alpha rough job board. And the idea was just to kind of get an idea of concept-wise, based on some of the things that we're already working on. It's basically, you could actually log in and post in some jobs. This thing was actually built from scratch, so the code base was on a framework called Laravel. And I put it together on a couple of summer Fridays and weekends. But the idea behind this is really to capture a little bit of the essence of what it could be and, you know, how it would work. Just like David said, it's going to be far more fancy than this, as we put some more resources on it. And the idea really is to be a resource, and not just for a job search with, you know, different categories and different sectors, but also to be a place where people may want to research exactly what particular green, what a green job is, you know, what are the best-paying jobs, very similar to how, you know, what E2 is doing as far as segmenting, and what Chris also alluded to, is to kind of capture some of the sectors and reporting, and where exactly those jobs are located, how much they cost, what are the salaries, what is a great job, you know, where they're located, all that kind of stuff. So anyway, this is just a very rough, rough, rough draft, and I hopefully will get to a point where it looks or even better than Indeed or Simply Hire or any of those kind of companies. So anyway, that's the idea.
Thank you, Sean. And of course, if anyone has questions about the suggestions, feel free to join the Employer Partnerships and Economic Opportunities Working Group. I will mention that if anyone is particularly interested in that, the next meeting is today. So do reach out to me today if you do not already have the relevant information and want to join. So, moving along, we're going to go to policy and advocacy, which has been quite a while. And we're going to reconvene soon. There's been a lot of exciting action, especially, of course, as concerns the Inflation Reduction Act and what that means in terms of policy, not only federal policy, but what that means for what New York State has already committed to do and will likely be able to do with federal funds, and what New York City is trying to also do, again, using federal funds and building on top of existing New York City legislation, the Climate Modernization Act, the CLCPA. So, putting that all together, won't go into all the details, but again, if you are curious about any of this and are experienced in policy work, have no experience in policy work, reach out to me or to Annel, and we will get you the key information to make this happen. In the interest, I'm going to go very long to strategy, and we have Jen Mitchell, who is going to tell us about what strategy she's been working on.
Hi, good morning, everybody. Great to be here with all of you this morning. I actually feel like I have very little that I have to do right this moment, because Carrie did a really good job in the beginning, kind of shouting out lots of active members of the Strategy Group who did a ton of work this summer. And then obviously, you saw with Chris saying Gaspard and Megan's work, so there's been a lot. And so I just want to kind of put it all in context. We met several times over this summer, starting in June, right after our last Green Economy Network meeting, and said, okay, we've been doing this for a couple of years now. We have a lot of great kind of balls in motion. We have a lot of great potential. People debate whether we call it that the Green Economy Network has already launched, or it's about to launch, and there's always discussion about that. But what we really were committed to doing is to gathering kind of all the things that we've done already and kind of putting them in a structure, and then also thinking through, what are the other things we need to do to really make sure the Green Economy Network is performing at a really high level, that we're being thoughtful and intentional about the way that we approach things? And so, we set up a whole Green Economy Network Implementation Plan task list. And then we had lots of people on the Strategy Committee sign up to do lots of different things, as you already started to see. So we had folks working on the logic model. We had folks working on the implementation plan. What you haven't yet seen and what are still things that are in progress and you will be seeing in the coming Green Economy meetings is there is governance documents, so starting to think through, what are the protocols and norms for being a member? How are people formally a member? Does being a member mean you have a representative that's on one of the working groups? Does being a steering committee member mean you have somebody that sits on the Strategy Group? So, we're still thinking through all of these governance issues, and more to come on that. We are thinking through, now that the implementation plan is in such a strong place, what does the budget look like? What kind of money do we need to raise? How do we do a pitch deck to funders? And as many of you know, Marjorie Parker, who's the Executive Director of Jobs First, is like, ready to start taking this on the road and getting the support we need to do this. You know, as everybody on this phone, on this call can attest, we all do this kind of in-between juggling a thousand other things as well. And so, having some money to hire a network coordinator, as some of the other networks have done, would be amazing. And so really starting to think through budget, and then metrics. Obviously, we have a lot of big lofty goals and things we're planning on implementing. Well, how do we measure what's working, what's not working? I think the presentation today was amazing in setting some of those benchmarks for where the green economy is at now and where we can make a difference. And so, it's been a really productive summer, full of lots of interesting conversation and strategizing. And then, as you saw today, some really strong products coming out of it. So grateful to be with you all again today, and grateful for all the work that everyone did over the summer. Back to you.
Thank you so much, Jen. Let me switch here. All right, so before we close out, I just want to say thank you all for your participation and contribution today and for welcoming me as a new member of Jobs First. And special thanks to our guest speaker, Euchenna Bright, and all those who shared updates and insights on the network's progress. We would like to ask all of you to please fill out a feedback form. If Dave, you could drop that in the chat for me, that'd be great. This feedback is really helpful in planning our future sessions and guiding our work together as a network. And I want to specifically note that there is also a space within the form for anyone who'd like to upload flyers, program information, or related resources to share with the network. I know a couple of you mentioned that during the meeting, so there is space there for you to do that. So I just want to make sure everybody can get into the link. All right, thank you, Dave. And moving forward, some other action items. Working groups will continue to work at their typical pace. If you haven't yet joined one and you would like to, please reach out to Dave, as he mentioned, and he'll connect you. And as a reminder, our next network meeting is scheduled to take place on November 3rd at 10:00 a.m. And I believe those are all the action items I have, so I want to leave a few minutes here in case anybody has. And I believe those are all the action items I have, so I want to leave a few minutes here in case anybody has lingering, burning questions. I want to make sure I give you space to ask those.
And there's can be questions on any of the things that we covered throughout the meeting or anything general. Or any highlights that you realized earlier that you're burning to share.
Something that's coming up for me is some of, some of the work can start already. And in an informal way, and that's really how Lower East Side Employment Network came to be, like it was operating informally and casually for six years before it hired a full time staffer. And some ideas are already coming up for me, you know. Kingsborough Community College is like awesome programs. I feel like there's, there's something there, for example, that we could be trying to get underway in, you know, initiating either like a referral process for the organizations involved in the Green Economy Network. You know, another one, obviously Solar One, doing great, great work. And, and non-traditional employment for women as well. Because, you know, those, those, those are a lot of little bugs that are going to come up and we're very much in the vision and imagination and dreaming space. It wouldn't hurt to, to start learning what the, the operational pain points will be in advance and before Marjorie fundraises or before we keep shopping this, this concept. So that's something that popped into my head this morning while sitting with you all.
Thank you, Gaspar. Yeah, I think that's definitely something to consider in our next step as we strategize and bring all the things we talked about today into one, you know, fluid movement forward, I think, keeping abreast of everybody's programs and what they're facing in their own entities and how we can help each other strengthen and improve those systems, both in the network and for everybody's entity as well and how we refer and all those good things. Thank you for that. Anybody else have any final closing thoughts or questions? If not, I want to say thank you one more time for your energy, time and participation. We really look forward to seeing all of you guys at our next session and all the great work that lies ahead. Please don't hesitate to reach out in the meantime if you need anything and I hope you have a wonderful rest of your day. And I'll hang around in case anybody has any questions that they want to chat about one to one.